I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas State, one state under God, one and individual.
Second item on the agenda is call for citizens' input and our concerns.
I think we have someone.
My name is Patricia Gerling and thank you for allowing us to be here today. Along with me are Brenda Graves and Debbie Holliday and we represent members of the Planning Committee of the Women of Distinction Event honoring Girl Scouts of Central Texas. Each year we honor five women who have achieved great things in their professions and are out in the community giving their time, their talents, and treasures to local organizations here in our community. We also recognize a workplace for its support and encouragement of women's leadership and success. Well, today, we are very excited to join you in announcing that there is someone here today who will be recognized at our Women of Distinction banquet in September. This woman is well-known for having a heart for the Brazos Valley and those who reside here. She not only serves its citizens as a member of the County Commissioners Court, but is also a board member of the Brazos Valley African-American Museum, the Arts Council of the Brazos Valley, the prenatal clinic, and many, many more. We are all proud to recognize Irma Colley as one of this year's Women of Distinction. We are in the process of surprising five different women and I think we did it today.
You did it.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I was just admiring the flowers.
Well, the flowers are for you. And Girl Scouts, as it may be, it's green and daisies and all, so that's one of our signatures.
Wow. Thank you.
And alongside this, we have, of course, a gift would not be complete without Girl Scout cookies, okay? So we have our own personals, buy some Girl Scout cookies. And we hope that all of you will join us as we recognize Irma at our banquet on September the 13th at 6:00 at the Hilton College Station. Irma, thank you so much for everything you do.
I want to get you.
Well, there are other people to get who helped put the nomination together, but thank you.
I saw you all and you were ignoring me.
Well, and I want to give a shout-out to Nancy Berry who was just as much a part of this as we were, so thank you Nancy, we appreciate it from one to another, congratulations.
I will say thank you and when I tell my kids I was a Girl Scout, I graduated high school a Girl Scout, they laugh at me because they've never heard of that, but my mom insisted you start and you finish. But this is a great honor and thank you all so very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you all.
I wish we could respond back because we'd tell you how much we enjoy working with Irma on the court, so, but thank y'all for coming in and giving her that award.
I wish we could respond back because we'd tell you how much we enjoy working with Irma on the court, so, but thank y'all for coming in and giving her that award.
Okay, we'll consider take action on agenda items 3 through 21. Number three is proclamation 18-031 declaring May 6, 2018 is National Nurses' Recognition Day. With approval.
Most made second discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Opposed. None motion carries. How many nurses we have in the room today? Go, go come on up.
Judge, would you stand in front?
We probably don't, we have, help get information. The person has figured out that this camera doesn't catch anybody over here, so let's come over here and stand in the middle with, you know, the only thing yet. Whereas National Nurses' Day, states celebrate nurses and awareness about the importance of their contributions to society. This day is part of National Nurses' Week, a week that is May 12 and makes birthday of Florence Nightingale, and whereas President Ronald Reagan signed proclamation 4913 on March 25th, claiming National Recognition Day of Nurses be May 6, 1982. And whereas nursing has a variety of different levels of skills, as well as the area in which they contribute, with each playing an important role in the facilities maintaining doctor-patient care. And whereas nurses are the ones that are most integral part of the medical team, fulfilling a crucial role in providing patients with their families in the highest level of care, as well as key means for emotional support, significantly contributing and improve patient and family outcomes. Now therefore be it claimed, Brazos County Commissioners Court does hereby proclaim May 6, 2018 as National Nursing Recognition Day for Brazos County, to increase public awareness of the importance and role nurses play in improving medical health and wellness in Brazos County. Claim six day, May 2018.
If you don't mind, I'm not a nurse, obviously, but I sure rely on a couple or several nurses to make sure that our jail is, you know, all of our inmates have the proper care. And I'm very, very proud of the work that we do there. But I would be remiss if we didn't introduce who was here. We have Julie Anderson and Sylvia Kraus from the Health Department. We have Diana Miller from the Health Clinic. We have Pamela Burns from the Juvenile Detention Center and she's accompanied by Chris Coffey and Barbara Roberts. Then we have our own Sergeant Kit Wright and Becca Croucher from, from the jail. And again, from the perspective of the sheriff, I rely very heavily on our nursing staff to make sure that they respond to, you know, from booking to releasing, that we keep all of our inmates healthy, that came in healthy, and treat those that need treatment. And I'm very proud of the nursing program that we have in the sheriff's office. They're recognized across the state as being top-notch. In fact, they actually train nurses here from all over the state. And so I'm confident that we are doing the very best we can. And then our relationship with the juvenile center and then the Health Department is also critical. And so I stand today to second the proclamation saying that May 6 is a very prominent day for National Nurses' Day, but very important to us. And so thanks, thank you for this opportunity.
Can you guys reach together and would there be some commissioners standing up?
Thank you. Did you get Irma's flowers?
They're really pretty.
Number four is proclamation 18-32 declaring May 6 through 12, 2018 is National Correctional Officers' Employee Week.
Who to approve?
Second.
Most made second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. None motion carries. And I know we've got some correctional officers in here, so let's go. Yeah, go ahead and stand in the front there and I'll read the proclamation from the mic over here. Whereas National Correctional Officers' Employee Week was first proclaimed May 5, 1984 by President Ronald Reagan when he signed proclamation 5187 creating the National Correctional Officers' Week to recognize the men and women that work in prisons, community corrections across the country. And whereas National Correctional Officers' Employee Week became an official name of the first week of May when in 1986, the US Senate officially changed the name from National Correctional Officers' Week. Whereas National Correctional Officers' Week and Officers' and Employees' Week has been designated as the week, May 6, 2018 through May 12, 2018, by the Department, US Department of Justice and Federal Bureau of Prisons. And whereas National Correctional Officers' Employees' Week honors the work of correctional officers and correctional personnel for their service with honor and respect and integrity. And whereas National Correctional Officers' Employees' Week raises awareness of the duties and hazards and sacrifices made by correctional employees. And whereas National Correctional Officers' and Employees' Week for Brazos County recognizes correctional officers and employees for their role in safeguarding the citizens of Brazos County by providing safe, secure, and humane incarceration of offenders within their custody. Now therefore be it resolved that the Commissioners Court of Brazos County does hereby proclaim the week of May 6 through May 12, 2018 as National Correctional Officers' and Employees' Week. All citizens are encouraged to pay tribute to the many correctional employees working for Brazos County for the vital public service they provide, proclaim the first day of May 2018. All right, thank you.
Well, here I am again. Another group of people that are very important to the sheriff. Actually, we have five different correctional facilities represented here. I'm going to introduce them, if you don't mind. JW Hamilton Unit, we have Tracy Allen as the Senior Warden, accompanied by Major Leroy Basie, right, right there in the middle. Our federal prison camp, the women's unit there is Warden Amy Boncher, stepped in behind here. We have Juvenile County Center, Junival Center, we have Belinda Ricketson. We have, from College Station Police Department Jail, Ashley Willem. And then from the Brazos County Detention Center, we have Wayne Dickey. There you are. Reggie Walker, Belinda Jackson, and Kevin Stewart, all lieutenants from the division. And what happened to Laura? Laura's sitting out here. Then from the Juvenile Center, we've got Chris Coffey and Barbara Roberts. So I'm going to turn the mic over briefly to Amy, if you don't mind.
Good morning. I just wanted to take a second, I'm kind of the newcomer here. Took over at the federal prison as of three weeks ago. Most recently came from Beaumont, Texas. So I just want to say I'm happy to be a part of the community. I didn't know that this particular thing was happening this morning, so I'm really happy to be here. We have our correctional workers week next week where we have events to sort of celebrate what we do. We have a memorial service on Tuesday morning where we remember our officers that were killed in the line of duty. So very much looking forward to that at our institution. And I just want to say thank you to all of you that are here from the prison systems around or the correctional system around, because I know firsthand what y'all do every day. And it takes a mental and a physical toll on all of us, but I think we're all doing it. It all comes from a sense of service to our families and our communities and it's hard work and I'm just really grateful that y'all do it. So, thank you.
Thank you for that, as well as next week, we will, at the sheriff's office, from May 6 through 12, be recognizing correctional professionals week. And then out at the Hamilton Unit, you'll have yours on, is it Wednesday? Tuesday, as well. So we look forward to that. I just want to close before our photograph by saying that this is a unique profession. You actually, when you work in this profession, you actually get locked up right along with the inmates. I often hear officers say, well, I served 20 years in prison, because that's exactly what happens. This is a 24/7 operation, so they have to be there to maintain their position and fulfill their duties 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days out of the year. So they don't often get the special holidays off and the time off that they need. So it takes somebody that's extremely dedicated to that. It's also a very dangerous situation because you've got inmates who would all rather be somewhere else than locked up. And a small percentage of those are miserable for having been there and want to make sure everybody else is miserable and they act out. And then we also have the challenges of the mental health component and a large percentage of those that end up behind bars have mental health issues, not often thinking rationally, often reacting to stimulus, and are dangerous. So these folks have dedicated their lives to work in this environment. And the least we could do is recognize them for a week and know that it's very special to us that you're willing to serve in that environment, willing to do so in a professional manner, and willing to stand up with fortitude and skill to meet the challenges of the day-to-day operations of a jail. So thank you so much for the job you do.
Thank you Sheriff, and thank all of y'all for the job you do. Customers don't really like, so thank you all. We'll move on to number five, is approval of job description for class code 1441, Proven Coordinator for the Sheriff's Office. Most made second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. None motion carries. Number six is payment authorization to get real LLC in the amount of $27,355 refunding the developer's road maintenance guarantee for Polo Estates subdivision, subdivision roads were accepted for Brazos County maintenance on 4/33/2018.
Second.
Most made second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. None motion carries. Number seven is to discuss and take possible action on contract renewal with Grimes County pre-adjudication detention beds.
Move for approval.
Most made second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. None motion carries. Discuss and take possible action on contract renewal with Madison County for pre-adjudication detention services for juveniles.
Move for approval.
Most made second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. None motion carries. Number nine is discuss and take possible action on contract renewal with Walkup County for pre-adjudication services for juveniles.
Move for approval.
Second.
Most made second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. None motion carries. Number 10, acceptance of Mesa Verde Drive from Chaco Canyon Drive to State Highway 6 to South Peter Road into the Brazos County Road Maintenance System sites located precinct 1.
Say again.
Most made second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. None motion carries. Number 11 is acceptance of donation temporary easement, including inbreeding rights property from Ricky Palisota and wife Elaine Palisota and Ricky J. Palisota Jr. for point 011 of one acre of land to be used for the repairs of McAllister Lane sites located precinct 4.
Move for approval.
Most made second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. None motion carries. Number 12 is consider and take action on FWP Holdings LLC utility permit to install a temporary 10-inch polyurethane water line within and along the right-of-way of Goodson Bend Road, a distance of 12,500 feet. Project will provide water from oil well sites located precinct 4.
Move for approval.
Most made second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. None motion carries. Number 13 is consider and take action on the FWP Holdings LLC utility permit to install a temporary 10-inch polyurethane water line within and along the right-of-way of Silverhill Road, distance of 1,700 feet. Project will provide water to an oil well sites located precinct 4.
Move for approval.
Most made second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. None motion carries. Number 14 is budget amendments. Budget amendments, FY 17/18, 30.1 through 30.2.
Move for approval.
Most made second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. None motion carries. Number 16 is Commissioners Court minutes for the following dates.
Second.
Most made second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. None motion carries. Number 17 is budget amendments. Budget amendments, FY 17/18, 30.1 through 30.2.
Move for approval.
Most made second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. None motion carries. Number 18 is personnel change status.
Move for approval.
Most made second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. None motion carries. Number 19 is payment of claims. Claims to be paid by Brazos County, claim number 8003338 through claim number 8003548. Approval.
Second.
Most made second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. None motion carries. Number 15 is payment of claims. Claims to be paid by Brazos County, claim number 8003338 through claim number 8003548. Approval.
Second.
Most made second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. None motion carries. Number 18 is personnel change status.
Move for approval.
Most made second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. None motion carries. Number 19 is payment of claims. Claims to be paid by Brazos County, claim number 8003338 through claim number 8003548. Approval.
Second.
Most made second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. None motion carries. Number 16 is Commissioners Court minutes for the following dates.
Second.
Most made second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. None motion carries. Number 17 is budget amendments. Budget amendments, FY 17/18, 30.1 through 30.2.
Move for approval.
Most made second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. None motion carries. Number 18 is personnel change status.
Move for approval.
Most made second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. None motion carries. Number 19 is payment of claims. Claims to be paid by Brazos County, claim number 8003338 through claim number 8003548. Approval.
Second.
Most made second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. None motion carries. We will move down to number 22, sure support on inmate population, Sheriff.
Morning again. Commissioners, 620 was our peak in the last 24 hours, 525 of those are male, 95 female. We have 36 with electronic monitors and 11 pending.
Okay, thank you Sheriff. Number 23 is national interest items and possible future agenda topics.
I'd like to congratulate Irma on being selected as a Woman of Distinction. She certainly is and proud to call her colleague and friend.
Thank you. And I want to report that the Texas Silverhead legislators met last week and that was the purpose of my not being here. We were in Austin from the 23rd of April through the 27th and we had a lot of work, but we accomplished it. There will be, there is 10 of the 66 resolutions ranked 1 through 10 and prioritized. So you will be hearing more information from us and we will be visiting with our legislators a little more during the season. And this is all in preparation for 2019. So, thank you all.
Hearing none, number 24 is call for citizens' input and our concerns. Hearing none, we'll go back up to number 20 and convene executive session pursuant to Texas government code 51.0785 for deliberations involving medical or psychiatric records of a county employee. I think that's, I think that's all we need. At times, 1029.